...to the Seymour City Council to order. Could I have roll call, please?
Jim Ashley.
Yes.
Mary Carpenter.
Yes.
Meeting Chris.
Yes.
Dan Weimer.
Yes.
It is determined there is a quorum.
We have a quorum, and I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome everybody that's here tonight. We have a nice crowd, and it's always good to see people turn out and are interested in the direction of their city. This time, I'm going to ask Mr. Hugh to stand and to lead some prayer. If you'd all stand, please. And after the prayer, I'd like you to turn, face the flag, and we'll have the pledge of allegiance.
Father, we thank you for the privilege of being here and gathering tonight, and we ask your presence to guide our thinking as well as our behavior. Help us, Lord, to care about our city and each other, and yet to govern wisely with earnestness. Thank you again for this privilege of being here and calling on your name, for we ask in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Together, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Very good. We're supposed to have a chap on this one?
There's two.
Huh?
There's two invoices.
Oh, two. Okay, two for one. Okay. Has every member of the council had a chance to review the whole minutes?
Yes. Where is it?
Should be a part of your packet.
Uh, yeah. I did fix a couple of them. Is that what you're going to point out? Um, the, in the city administrator's report, it left out where the library went. It was going over twenty-seven hours weekly. Well, I know we didn't. I think it was in the meeting.
Oh, yeah. And there wasn't a motion or anything?
No, no.
I think that'll probably come up in a jibberdoodle later on.
It will, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Good night.
After, uh, after reviewing, uh, are there any additions or deletions?
I move that we accept the votes.
We have a motion on the floor to accept, and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. All right, we'll move on into the new business. First item on the new business would be the approval of bills that we, I better not say it. Uh, so, uh, we're in the process of getting that done. So, uh, have you had a chance to review the bills, list of bills that are before you?
This Claire's Farming Home Backpack Door, four ninety-four, ninety-nine.
Fire, is that the fire, Sean? Fire. Is this, what kind of floor?
Uh, just a big backpack door, light winged door. They use a lot of that stuff.
Have we not ever had one before?
Yeah.
And pre-employment vehicles, fourteen, what's that?
Pre-employment, um, our last two police officer hires.
And RPCS Incorporated.
Ramies.
It's what?
It's Ramies.
Oh, Ramies.
Yeah.
I like more well.
That's information technology or something, additional workstations, two fifty.
Uh, that's another, uh, our computer program, our records program, we, department. And it goes more, since we've got computers in the car now, we needed one more computer program.
And John's Mid-American Bar, two eighty-six, that, uh, valve, is that valve? Is that just the valve?
It says aerial valve. Was it aerial valve?
Is that just the valves, my valves, Sean?
Uh, probably. I don't know.
And pre, I don't think I saw it.
Where's that one?
The Mexico, the Mexico.
This book's eight hundred and forty-five dollars.
D E.
Oh, you spell it.
I don't know. What, what was the company?
Uh, Book Systems.
Oh, no, it's not.
Eight hundred and forty-five dollars.
Does it say automation fee or something?
Yearly fee.
Automation yearly fee.
Yeah, so it's some type of, I'd have to look at what.
One minute, let me still look at it. The library's about running out of money and they spend eight hundred and forty-five dollars.
It's an a, yeah, it's an annual fee that we pay.
In coloring books, five hundred and seventy-one dollars.
That's a lot of money.
And they're about out of money, they're spending that much money.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if it's for the summer reading program.
I'd say summer reading program.
Several coloring books.
It's a lot of coloring books, so, so.
They would give us something to do up here.
Yeah, that's fine.
Up there. I know it's true. Again, I'll make a motion, we accept the vote.
We have a motion on the floor to accept the bills as presented and pay, uh, pay the bills. Do I hear a second?
My second. No, Jim did. I'll do it then.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. We'll move on down to this part of our agenda that says citizens' comments. If you are in the audience and you have comments to bring before your council, this is your time. Uh, what I'd like for you to do is come and, uh, to the microphone that we have here and state your name and your purpose, and try to contain your comment to three minutes, if possible. Are there those that wish to be recognized? Yes, Mr. Kelly?
Appreciate you letting me come here and speak to you this evening. I've got a request. Uh, between Steel Street and Highway sixty, there's a waterway, and it is backed up. It's, uh, it's just plugged up, needs to be dug out. Uh, but the, but the clogs that has it backs the water up all the way to, uh, West Clinton Street there by the railroad tracks, and it'd be a great help if we could get a, a track hole or something there to, to relieve that. So, that's my first request.
Okay, that is a bottleneck, and I've been down there in the big rain, and we do have a bottleneck right there, and the brush will impede the flow of water down that tributary. So, if we had it.
It'll flood the roadway.
Mm-hmm. We had it cleaned out, it would expedite things, I think.
Anthony, you mentioned it to me earlier, and last rain we had, I looked at that. Do you think that it would be, just your opinion, to, to dig that out and then to concrete it?
I think it would help.
To help with the flow?
You know, because it just fills in.
It looks like things hang up in there.
It does, and it just fills in on itself, it just caves in.
Yeah.
So, and, and it, like I said, it backs up all the way to West Clinton Street there by the tracks, so I think it would relieve, help relieve both sides of the road.
Okay.
So, that's my first request, and then, uh, my second request is, uh, I'd like to ask for, uh, a ban on any temporary fireworks stands, tents, or buildings to be allowed inside the city limits. Uh, also, that, uh, no person or business would be allowed to purchase an existing building or erect a new building for the purpose of selling or distributing fireworks inside the city limits of Seymour. Uh, with the exception, person or business meets all the state and Missouri and City of Seymour codes. Uh, business will be maintained and open to the public and then the forty hours per week year-round. Uh, they should have a sprinkler system, firewalls, steel studs, uh, fire-rated doors like I have in my facility, uh, because we, we built that to meet codes and exceed codes. So, I'd like to ask the council to, uh, take that to consideration. Uh, there is another fireworks building there by McDonald's, I'd ask you to grandfather that building in as well as my own. So, I don't want to be mean to anybody, but I would ask for, for some codes to, uh, be met if there was new business concerning fireworks.
Well, you're just asking, yeah, and I understand that, you're just asking that they should, if they're going to be here stationary, they should have all, be all up to the codes and the sprinkler systems and everything, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Don't we currently have something like that on our books?
I think we do. It's kind of up before.
I'll have to look, I can get the answer. I'll have to look. Whenever I built that building out there, there was no codes, but we got with the state fire marshal, and like I said, we exceeded all the codes that were on the books at that time. Uh, and brought in, you know, expensive sprinkler systems and firewalls and doors and everything to do business, and we keep our doors open and, uh, temporary stands coming in and out of town. Uh, I'd like to keep, keep those, those guys out.
So, since you're asking us to do what other towns do, I know a lot of the towns do this.
Yes.
So, so if someone were coming to build, build in my years and meet all the codes, I could see what you would oppose to that.
No, I don't oppose that.
No, I mean, that's.
No, I think, you know, this is America, I just want to be fair.
Right, and that seems fair.
I'm not asking for anything that I haven't done myself.
Right.
And I'm not asking to be hard on the people that is my competitors down the road and to grandfather them in. So, they didn't ask me to ask you that, I took that upon myself.
And I think Mr. Kelly just asking for nothing more than what he's done already.
Right.
Uh, just to make sure that any fireworks company that would come in would meet the same standard he has. Before.
For the safety of the city.
Uh, some of those are state standards, uh, American fireworks codes, uh, standards, American fireworks standards, uh, there's state standards, there's fire marshal standards, uh, there's a lot of codes and regulations when you start talking about fireworks. And, uh, that's why we met and exceeded those with the firewalls and fire-rated doors, the steel studs throughout the building, and the sprinkler system in all buildings that we have fireworks in.
Paul, if we want to take action on this, would we need to do this in the form of an ordinance?
Well, I don't, I, well, I'll look at it, I don't know what ordinance we have on fireworks currently, but I mean, generally speaking, I think all this being brought up is, somebody'd have to come in if they wanted to bring a fireworks stand, they'd have to ask for a building permit or a business license, and that would cause our codes to be looked at, and if they don't meet codes, it would be issued a license. I, I don't, I guess I don't know that there's anything yet that more that's already on the books, I think all Mr. Kelly's saying is just follow your own ordinances and state law, and don't give somebody a business license or a temporary business license if they don't meet the standards that are already in place.
But there are no codes, didn't you say?
There, there wasn't any codes whenever I built my, my facility.
I'm just asking to look, uh, if there's no codes, then we would, we would need to bring back an ordinance with codes if that's what the board wants. Uh, generally, most cities don't allow temporary stands in their city limits, that's why you see them out on highways, outside of, out in counties all over the place, and that is pretty standard of the past. But if there's not any codes in the book, then we would need to probably draft them to limit people's ability to do it without a, need codes.
When was the last time that there was a tent put up in the city limits? Do you, do you know?
Jim, I have no idea. I couldn't tell you.
Don't, don't they usually put one up there, kind of fort, like, see?
There hasn't been one there.
No, no, not, no, not in years. When I was a kid, they were everywhere. When I was a kid, they were everywhere, but I, I don't recall, I don't remember the last time that there was one in the city limits.
I guess I would ask that if, if there hasn't been one in years, is there some undertone of the ones coming, and what, what's caused?
Oh, I have no idea. I'm just.
Or, or hasn't been one in the city limits for years, what's the?
Well, what I'm saying is.
Well, there's no undertone, everything's above board, but all I'm saying is, I've invested here in the city of Seymour, I've met certain codes, and I would ask anybody else to meet those codes, and I believe that would be fair. Nothing that I've said here or asked here I'd think is unfair to anyone.
No, we, listen, I think I speak with all of us and say, we sure appreciate your investment in the community, and we've got a lot of money invested out there and provide year-round jobs for people in our community, and, and we appreciate that. Paul, can, do, do we need a motion to do this, to proceed forward with sort of?
I mean, Sam and I'll look up the codes and, and create them in a future meeting to deal with fireworks and firework, or, I mean, if you want to make a motion to direct us.
I would. I'd like to make a motion to direct us to proceed to essentially satisfy the request Mr. Kelly's made to us. I think it's a completely reasonable request, so I'll make that motion.
Second?
We have a motion on the floor and a second. Any further discussion? Now, the, the motion is for you guys to look things up and see where we're at.
Essentially to get us where he sort of suggested we be, because I don't think there's any disagreement that we need to do that.
I also have an outline I'd like to give to you, Dan, if that's all right, maybe you can pass that down, and you guys can take a look at that, and that's just, kind of covers what I just asked.
Super.
I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly, for coming. Now, we have a motion on, on the floor and a second, we need to bring that to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
To go back real quickly before we leave this discussion, Mr. Kelly, um, Pud's here. Pud's kind of our water guy, in a way, jack of all trades, but do you know the, that ditch that, that, that Mr. Kelly's talking about? Do you have kind of a, a plan for that, Pud? Is there anything comes to mind in terms of what we can do? Or Chuck, one of the two of you?
I've been out there looking at it, you know, I know exactly what you're talking about, definitely need to work on, I think that would help a lot, you get the money out, but, but something like what you suggested, invest that money, I would be very, I mean, really, well, if, well, the water was rushing around, it's not for you, I'd be, I'd be, uh.
I, I, I kind of figured that. How, the, the thing that catches me is it's causing a very large water problem, uh, through a, a span of a quarter mile almost. I mean, it's going, it's, it's coming up even sixty, and then it butts against another water problem we have on the other side of the tracks, it's all in that same valley. Yeah, but that would be a starting point, because this is the natural flow, then to go across the highway?
Yeah, that's a natural flow.
Yeah.
Across the highway, always has been for the last twenty years, and put that in the problem.
Well, I mean, the flow is north even from the other side of the track, so if we could kind of come up with a plan that would address the whole schematic.
Many people would help keep that, uh, the highway there in Steel Street from the road, that, that water.
Yeah.
Very destructive. I think before we do anything, we have to get some proper state.
Okay.
I think highway before, maybe now.
Well, from that angle, I guess I'd go through you, Sam, but maybe can you get these guys going forward with looking at a proposal that we could?
Yeah, I can.
Okay.
You're talking about the water that comes under the railroad track out here?
Yeah.
And then goes across Anthony's property all the way across. See, that's what we talked about when we did this Karen Circle down here. It was always supposed to be go across there.
Right.
But we ran into problems with getting people, you didn't own that property at the time, I believe, that's right? No.
Herman Childress.
Herman Childress, and we had problems getting permission and everything else, and it just kind of died. But, yeah, that was the plan all along, was for that water to go down that Karen Circle ditch and shoot under the railroad tracks and go all the way to the other side of the highway.
Well, last week, we were talking about the fact that Ron Cardwell's looking developing houses.
Right.
I think he's even got one almost done, and, and there's a water problem there. We had a, a resident who lived in, in Chesterdale Estates who was noting that there's wat, so I think this might fix the whole thing if we could come up with a.
Well, when you get too much rain, you're not going to be able to get a ditch big enough for, for the water to flow through there.
Right.
You're always going to have a water problem. You may need a water retention basin. Uh, Mr. Hamms?
On the north side of six, he's all dressed up, he's, uh, and, and, and here we have a water go up there.
Right.
That is private property?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. Right. And I think what we'd get into there, council, is private property and cities', uh, involvement on private property to, to utilize that to our most greatest benefit, but we need to look into that, I guess, from a legislative standpoint.
Well, I think, if we had landowner consent, and if it, if it ultimately was solving a city problem, meaning water retention that's overflowing our streets and causing damage, um, to homeowners and, and, then I, I don't, I don't think that would be an unjustifiable expense if, I mean, we wouldn't take the property over, but to clear out some brush, I don't, with the consent of landowners.
That, that's true.
Is their consent, and you would want to, I, they're probably not in consent if they think that you're clearing everything out to just flood their property.
That's true, but, but the, the water that we.
If their property's brush, wild brush, then.
But we're, the city's responsible for the water that we moved that way for the damage that it does on their property. We're responsible for what happens downstream. We would also be responsible for any building permits that we permitted into flood area. Mr. Hamms?
I've got a water line that's dropped, uh, it's, 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 uh, it's, uh.
You mean a drainage or?
Oh, we've got a water line that's dropped, uh, three.
Right.
Look, probably got some easies.
You know, this, this problem we've looked at already, and Charlie is here, the chairman of our planning and zoning committee, and we've looked at that, Charlie, have we done any more work on that?
No.
No more work? But there possibly would have to be a water retention basin, uh, designed for gradually letting that water out so that that water comes across, uh, so it doesn't flood out Steel Street and evenly goes out the city. But I'm talking about on the, uh, other side of the railroad tracks, but anyway, that's an engineering problem, I'm sure. But that, uh, cleaning out of, of that tributary there probably could be done maybe with a permit from DNR. Any other questions or comments?
So, what we're going to do is we're going to have Chuck and Pud look at this, and we'll address it, let's address, let's, let's address it the next meeting.
After the next meeting.
Yes. I, I don't like doing vagities, and we're going to do it whenever, the time's on, that's.
We'll have something for you the next meeting.
Perfect. Thank you, Sam. Okay.
All right. Other citizens that wish to address the council? Yes, would you come forward to the mic, please, and state your name and your purpose?
Thank you. Uh, my name is Raffala Restpress, and I have a couple of things I want to ask about.
Sure.
I wasn't at the last council meeting, but I did listen to it, and, um, I know the library thing, is that kind of a moot point tonight, y'all are going to vote on it, I guess, or something? Or can we discuss that?
You may ask a question, any question you wish to ask, you can ask the council.
I'm, I'm just concerned about the hours of the library. I think they're being cut down to twenty-nine?
Twenty-seven.
It's twenty-seven, okay.
Twenty-seven.
And, um, and I was wondering if it would be feasible to make it like thirty or thirty-five hours a week and maybe leave it closed on Saturday and Monday, because there are a lot of people that, I know there's, there's times you can go in there, there's nobody in there, you can go in there, there's two or three, but there are a lot of people that use that library, whether checking out books, I go in there anytime I travel, which is fairly often, get audio books. Uh, I know the kids are on the computers, and I, and I think it was brought up at the last meeting that they can maybe use the school computers, but, um, I don't know, it, you know, it, it just doesn't seem fair for one thing, I guess, and, uh, and I hate to see the librarians' hours cut below forty, uh, which, as far as I know, would delete her benefits and things like that, she's, but anyway, but my concern is just the hours and, uh, that maybe they'd be more than twenty-seven hours a week.
Very good. Uh, has any member of the council, would you like to address that?
I will.
Yes, Dan.
Um, we just had a conversation in closed session with the auditors today, at the next meeting, and, uh, without giving too many details, I mean, this topic came up, and this was a fund that she specifically, uh, the state auditor specifically pointed out as being a deficit fund, uh, one that, um, her statute, we were in violation, frankly, because of the expenses of the library outweigh the income to the library. Um, you know, honestly, short of us floating a, a sales tax to the public, voters would approve, we've got a, a very limited and finite budget to, to operate the library with, and that includes the Blaine Childress, uh, annual contribution from that, from that trust essentially, which is about seventeen, eighteen thousand dollars a year. They're just, um, quite frankly, the money coming into the library via taxes and Blaine Childress money doesn't even cover the full benefit cost of the current librarian. That's just a poor reality. And, um, also studied recently, I think, have kind of been usage rates, um, I was, Sam, you, didn't you do a statistical survey of Saturdays?
We, we did, I just mainly just talked to Bill Worsen and Joy.
And how many people we have visited?
And that's really pathetic, I mean, like, four people.
Total?
Total.
Over three Saturdays?
Over a couple of Saturdays, and so it's just, you know, it's not feasible to keep it helping.
Here's where we're at, Ms. Restpress. We unfortunately are, are, are looking at, at several different fund areas in the city that we've got to, um, we've got to initiate some reform and make some cost cuts, and it's one of those things where you have to kind of decide what services are the most necessary and which aren't, and, um, and, and library isn't the only one. It's going to be, as we go through the budget process, there's going to be a lot of funds, so.
I, I understand that. That's why I was just thinking, you know, Saturday and, and Monday, take those two days out.
Friday.
Leave it open Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. And, and, and I think there was something said at the last meeting about, uh, the, the hours per day was going to be nine hours a day, was that right?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, well, dropping that to eight hours a day, four days a week.
Well, again, that's pushing hours up.
Is it?
And that's what we really have to watch, is, 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 I, I, you know, the initial suggestion was only twenty hours a week, and I think we sort of compromised going to twenty-seven, and that's really, I don't even know how we'll make twenty-seven work potentially, but.
Well, that's my question's on it, and I, I mean, you know, what happens, happens, so.
Yeah.
Uh, my other topic was stray dogs in the city. I'm seeing, I've seen a lot of them.
Yes.
Um, I know there's a lot on my street, there's one, one that, the folks live on Anderson Street, but that dog is up and down, they cannot catch that dog, they go out there and holler at him, they can't catch him, and, uh, he's, and he's terrorizing people, basically. He's, he's chased a man into the back of another man's pickup truck, he's chased myself and my granddaughter on bicycles, uh, he's chased others, and he's aggressive.
Is that a white dog with black spines?
The black and white, yeah, yeah.
I think I know that dog.
Yeah, I'm sure you do.
Not mine, not mine.
No, it's not, and then there's a couple other dogs over, from over on Hyde Street that come clear over, well, come over to Anderson, and they roam in the neighborhoods, and, uh, you know, they, they stay like by people that got sheds and stuff, they chase the rabbits down under there and stuff like that, but, um, they're coming over, and, you know, some of us that have dogs that we keep on leashes, you know, steel, we've got to care for them to go out and, and watch for these dogs.
Right.
And, and I saw, it was back last fall, but I was down driving around, around Water Street and, uh, what's that, East West Street down along there, Washington, I think, and, um, I saw a dog that was pilfered garbage, and he had a leash on, but he was a stray, and couldn't catch him, so I didn't know what to do, but go over to the police station, and there was an officer in there, and, and he was on the phone at the time, so I waited, and, uh, he said, well, he was just too busy, nothing he could do about it. So, here's this dog running around with the leash on, it could get choked or hurt somehow, you know, but, but, and that's okay, I know he was busy, but where do you go? Who do you call?
Don't we have a dog catcher?
Well, you know, here, here's the best dog catcher guy, but, and he's, if he's not fast enough to catch that, uh, black and white, uh, snout or whatever it is.
Well, his name's. Well, his name's Nixon. If you want to call him, his name's Nixon, so...
We got a call about that dog, Lance, and we talked to the owner. I was over, he's looking for a dog.
Yeah?
Tonight. But Lance said they got a plan to try to trap the dog if he crosses in.
Okay, 'cause I know I'm down at the industry, and he's been down as far as my house. And he goes clear up to the end where the senior houses are. And, you know, those ladies, they get out there and walk their dogs on leashes, but they don't need a dog that's terrorizing the neighborhood and that's aggressive.
Yeah, Lance and I chased that dog the other night. There's no catching it.
No.
I know there were about a dozen of us chasing the dog all night here.
But anyway, that's what I got, so thank you.
Thank you very much for coming. Maybe we need to get Mr. Yates on that dog detail. I think he's the fastest one we got on the city right now. All right. Thank you for your comments and your questions and addressing the council. Any other questions, comments, or people that want to address remarks to the city council? Please raise your hand, and I'll recognize you. Seeing none? We appreciate your candid remarks. Right, we have a bid opening. And I think our city clerk has that. And it's for mowing the cemetery. We solicit bids for mowing the cemetery every year, and it's that time of year. So, Leslie, if you would open that and tell us what we have.
How many bids do we have, Leslie?
No, I'm sorry, what?
How many bids do we have?
Two bids. First one, Lawson Lawn Service for nine fifty a mowing, and Christ Center Cutting for nine thirty a mowing.
I've got a question. Whoever gets it, are they gonna mow it themselves, or are they farming it out for someone else to mow?
Good question.
Are they both here tonight?
One of them's here.
If you would come to the microphone, please, sir, and tell us who you are.
'Cause last year it got pretty-
It did. We had some problems last year with trimming around the gravestone cement. I went out there after one cutting, and it was pointed out to me that they hadn't done their complete job. And we went out and looked, and sure enough, I mean, it needed some additional work.
So are you guys gonna mow it, or are you guys gonna have school kids or somebody else?
Tell us who you are, please, sir.
My name is Caleb Tarrell. I'm co-owner of Christ Center Cutting along with Chad Sturtevant. This year, over the past two years, we were starting our business, and as you guys know, budgets are really tight. And, you know, that thing is, I'm not making any excuses, that thing's a monster. I mean, it's tough. And the first couple of years, we had to have some teenage help, or else we just, two people, it's just, it's tough. I mean, it's just, I'm just gonna be blatantly honest, it's tough. And last year, the first year, I won't lie, the first year was toughest, first year of our business. Each year, we've bought more advanced equipment to help us. This year, we have bought, it's called an advanced chute system. It will virtually block all grass from hitting headstones. Which in return, once that is done, we also will go through, and we are going to be extremely strict on the leaf blowing this year. I mean, sometimes, sometimes a little bit gets missed, but seriously, I mean, there's a lot of headstones. We really try to get every headstone. Sometimes I know a spot gets missed, but I mean, we really try. This year, we have actually gained enough properties. We have hired our first full-time employee that will be held completely responsible if anything is not done. If anything is not done, like I said, he will be held responsible. If we get one more good property, like the Seymour Cemetery, we will have another full-time employee that their sole responsibility is to mow. They will hold any employee that is there responsible to make sure all mowing is done properly and weed eating is done properly. If that is not done properly, they will be handled through us. They won't be asked back to help again. If it is needed, because me and Chad is very involved with the YMCA, I have another business with my wife. If it is needed that we be there every time that it is mowed, I will be there every time that it is mowed. We greatly appreciate the city of Seymour's faith in us. We, when we do employ people, we employ from here, and I know that all that money in return gets spent in the Seymour community. I know in years past, sometimes there's been some mistakes, but every year that we get further along, we learn more, and we honestly do our best to do a better job. So I just, if we were awarded the bid, if you have any sort of complaint, I want to know, because we want our stuff to be absolutely perfect. I'm not just saying that. We take great pride in our work, and we want to be absolutely perfect. And we want the cemetery to just be, when people drive down that road, that, man, that's eye-catching.
Caleb, if we have a problem, could we just exclusively contact you as our singular contact?
Absolutely, absolutely. And I will handle, I will take full responsibility, and I will handle everything accordingly. My word. After, I will even go this far. After every time the cemetery is mowed, if I am not able to be present before the workers are allowed to leave, I will single-handedly walk the whole thing and make sure it is up to par.
Move, we go with question.
I'll second it.
We have a motion on the floor in a second. Any further discussion?
Your word's good enough for me, babe.
And in your defense, the first year that you had, it was one of the wettest years that we've had.
And not-
And it was just practically impossible to keep it mowed.
The first two weeks of April last year, we didn't mow a single property.
Right.
By the time we got to it, I mean, it's this tall, and you're just playing catch-up all year long. But you have my word that we will do everything in our power to please you guys.
Thank you for your comment. We have a motion on the floor in a second to accept the bid for Christ Centered Cutting. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, same sign. Motion carries.
That includes the Bridgebe Cemetery.
It includes, yes, you included both the-
Cemetery.
The city Masonic Cemetery and the Bridgebe Cemetery as well. All right, next thing on your agenda you'll see is a job description and salary schedules. And I turn that meeting over to Mr. Burke.
Well, I've already presented that last week.
Do you have any further remarks to say, Sam?
I sent you the letter that you asked me to write about sixty-five and over. I sent that to everyone. And then I also have for you tonight a performance review form that we'll be using to review the books. Anyway, this form obviously is just necessary in order for us to go by the job descriptions that I gave you last week. And so on there, there's mentioned objectives and so forth toward the end of it. And those objectives, I have written them, and am ready to set down the department bids to go out the objectives for each department. And so that's part of that form, and once that is done, it's just a matter of me meeting with the department heads and passing that information on.
So can I ask, Mr. Burke, how often do you plan to do a job critique?
It depends on performance. We're obviously, I mean, we want to do just once a year to start with. But if we're having, you know, performance issues with somebody, we would make moves every six months.
I see.
I think that's pretty well standard of procedure.
And my only concern there, that if you had something on your job performance that wasn't up to par, and you did a semi-annual, then they'd have six months to correct that. And as I understand it, according to our policy and procedure manual, that they will be, that raises will be given on merit system predicated on this report. Am I right?
That's what I understand, yes.
That's right, okay.
That's how they get from step to step.
Step to step.
Right, that's how that occurs.
And we quantify that with the year served and the ability by which you serve, and how much training you've added to your job skill.
All of those things will be part of what's expected from year to year.
Very good. Question for Mr. Burke?
That's really all I have tonight.
Seeing none, this is just a, I don't think we need a motion on this. I think we've covered that pretty thoroughly, did we not? Or do we need a motion on that?
I would think we probably need a motion to adopt it, wouldn't we?
I would do a motion to adopt what he presented last meeting.
Very good. Sure, we'd entertain then a motion at this time to accept the job descriptions as presented, along with the critique of those job descriptions to be completed on an annual basis, Sam, on an annual basis to begin.
I will, I'll make a motion that we accept the document in its entirety.
Second it. We have a motion on the floor in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Right. Pose, same sign. Motion carries. Next thing on your agenda, we'll move into the assistant supervisor, Chuck Smith.
A quick question before we go on to the next discussion. What is the implementation date of this report? Sam, I would like to know that.
It's the thirteenth of April.
Okay.
Thirteen April.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
All righty, I don't have a whole lot tonight between the week last week, so there's not been a whole lot going on since. We've been working on play area. The new place set is in place. All we've got to do is pull concrete behind it. And let that set up and we're gonna start laying the fabric and put the paper out there.
So about how long are you looking at to get that done?
Well, it depends on the weather. Again, we're looking at quite a bit of rain coming at the weekend and the first couple of weeks. So just as soon as it dries out enough, the concrete truck on there, we'll get it forwarded and get everybody home to rock. We're really close to the weather cooperation. We'll get down there quick. Put ten horn in down at George Camel on Door Street this week. From the last board meeting, we're ready to ask for a ten horn up here on Steel.
On Steel Street, not my property.
Right, on Steel Street, by the high substation.
Right, right there by.
To better access that, you know, easily.
Right.
Right, we're gonna have it installed this week.
Looking at, I noticed we've got the one for George Camel here on George Street. That, of course, is on a street that is not curving guttered, correct?
Right.
Looking ahead, are we gonna have more need for tin horns in some of those areas or on some of those streets where we don't have curving and guttering on them? And if so, how practical is it for us to at least start looking into that?
Curving gutter?
Yeah.
Oh, very practical.
Okay. That's something we can do.
Something that you can do.
Yeah.
It's not the cost of money.
Well, it's too late. We've accepted, and that's the problem with, you know, and now we've taken them on, and we've got the responsibility. Well, what I'm seeing here is this is kind of a, my point is if the street was curving guttered, there probably wouldn't be the need for the tin horn. So at some point, probably long-range planning, you need to start looking at that. I'm just asking for your confirmation of my thought.
Absolutely, yes.
Yeah, okay.
And we have some of those streets down there, too, Mr. Weimer, that are landlocked. For all practical purposes, the city does not own the way into them.
Right.
But then they own evidently the property that's in front of those two new houses that are going up down there. The road is wide enough, and there's curves and gutters on it, but there's no way to get into it. Not across city property.
Right.
So, and we've looked at that, planning and zoning's looking into that. To develop a plan to present to the council, and that's part of what the planning and zoning's gonna be doing in years to come, is giving you a plan to implement, to make sure that this is not a problem in the city for the next generation that's coming down the road. Any other questions for Mr. Smith? Seeing none? Thank you. Thank you for your report, Chuck. Sam, I'll turn the floor back over to you again.
I've done what I've had to do.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that. And I guess it comes down to the mayor's report, and as you know, we've got an event coming up on the third of April here that will determine the course of the city for the next two years. So the mayor doesn't have a lot on his plate tonight, except to say that this last year, Citizens Council, Madam Clerk and Ms. Leslie, Ms. Hillary, distinguished attorney Paul. It's been a very challenging year, picking my words, challenging year. And I think that we've maybe gained some ground. And my wish for you all, wherever the direction this city goes, that it remains on a path to honor the precepts that made this city a good place to live. And look forward to what we can be, because there are opportunities here that many places, cities our size, simply do not have. I think it's well within our grasp to have a city on this side of the county that the other side of the county looks to and wishes they were more like this one. So other than that, the mayor doesn't have a lot to address you with tonight. So I'll pass on then to our city attorney's report. Mr. Lane?
I don't have anything to add, other than I will say it's been a pleasure working with Sam and everybody on that matrix of the job script. To extend my help on that, and put some tickets up, it was a fun project, I guess, a little bit. Glad we finally got that kind of wrapped up.
Good. Any questions or comments for Mr. Lane? All right, we'll move on into the alderman report. Mr., I hate to say it, Mr. Weimer?
I don't have anything, Larry.
Did I say it right tonight?
You did.
Great, wonderful.
That's right, spot on.
Ms. Chris?
I've got a question for Scott. Are there anyone riding with policemen at night?
Occasionally, we've had people that have done a ride-along for them. We do a background check on them, make sure that they have no criminal record. Sometimes it's people that are planning on going through the police academy and wanting to see what we do. Once in a while there's somebody that does, but if they did, before they do, they have to be background checked on to make sure that they're, you know, no criminal history.
Good.
Sign a waiver saying that they won't hold the city in no liability of any manner.
Does our liability insurance cover that?
No, that's what their waiver is for. Their waiver says that they won't hold the city liable for anything happening.
If it's a city employee, I suppose they would be covered under our policy, but...
Yeah, we actually don't have any, there's no city employees since Stan Steed left that put it out there that I know of.
Right. The mayor at Parker Bluff, which was a friend of mine, is also the president of General Baptist World Headquarters, and rode around with the police department at evening to see what it was all about. And they did have an instance where a man was- evening to see what it was all about, and they did have an instance where a man was tempting to rob a place and, so he really didn't have any weapons, so he took off running, and while the officer radioed back for assistance, the mayor was chasing him, and he was.
Well, one of the things that I'm, they're not letting you gather.
Well, and I say this because it's a little humorous, is he was chasing him and he was saying, calling out to him, "Stop, son, stop, son." But needless to say, the man didn't stop.
One of the rules on the, on the, they agree to you on the waivers, if the officer don't call, they won't even get out of the head.
There you go. Alright, good point.
And then when is the cleanup, citywide cleanup? Is that the week before the election?
May. It'll be the first Saturday in May. And then it runs the following Sunday.
Nine, nine days in it.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Not like the phone like that.
That's all of them.
Anything else, Nadine?
No, that's all I have.
Okay. Moving on then to Councilman Carpenter.
I'd like to know if we've heard anything on those old apartments on Anderson, and is there anything we can do about it? And if so, what?
Well, you know, I think that, that's a good point, there's some things in the legislature that are coming out that would help us to notify people at their existing address of a condemnation report. Have you read that?
I just generally saw that it's going through various committees in Jeff City and that if, if some of this stuff passes, it would be a benefit to all municipalities on, on properties that issue, but if, if it does happen, it'll likely take effect in August, that's usually when things become law, in August each year.
I don't know who originates that bill, do you remember?
I don't remember, but I know it has some steam to it, I mean, it's.
It is, because, you know, this is a problem every municipality like ours, Mary, has, and what we get is a bottleneck. Sam writes letters to these people, we recognize them as being derelict properties, but when it gets up to the court, it stops. You see, they, they have to issue a condemnation report or finding on that property and they're reluctant to do that. So, I, I, maybe with the passing of this new bill, our local court would issue a condemnation report, notify the people, then if they do not respond, the city then can go in and remove those properties, fro, those, those houses or those structures from the lot, and then if people don't pay their taxes and the bills, within a certain period of time, it becomes property of the city.
Well, I know it doesn't appear there's any doors on the, on the north side of that building, it's just wide open.
They are there, but they're all open, they, I went down and looked that thing over and, and I've been trying to track that fella down, and I know where the tax bills go to, but I can't seem to locate the fella, or he won't come to the door.
There, there's no one living in there, is there?
No, no.
No, no.
No, no. Floors have gone out, part of it.
Yeah.
And, and some of it's locked up, most of it's open. The old building has some credibility, I mean, it could be redeemed, but it would take someone with some imagination to do it, and, but that'd be a place for some real nice, well, it'd be quite a little bit of money, but it would be less money than building from the ground up. But it's got a poor foundation on it, and the superstructure looks like it's sound enough. I've remodeled places that were a lot worse than that. But, we have to find the right people to get it done, and this fella that owns it has to come forward and make some move to do, either pay his taxes, if, if taxes aren't paid after this next year, then the city can sell it at the east front door of Courthouse steps on auction, highest bidder.
Didn't he use the, say the drainage was why he quit buil, working on it this last time?
Well, he did, in fact, and I looked the thing over down there, and you could put a retention basin on it and a French drain around it and take care of most of it. But it does have drainage problem, and it drains across, Miss, what's her name there in the back?
Miss Ellis.
Miss Ellis, yeah.
Ellis.
Ellen?
Ellis.
Ruth Ellis.
Ruth, Ruth, yes.
Ruth Ellis, okay.
But, yes, Mary, does that answer your question? I mean, I, I, I don't have an answer yet, I have bird dogged it.
Yep.
And I located one of the persons that actually did some work on that, and he was supposed to get back to me, and I've never been able to get him to answer his phone since. So, so that's where we are on that. Anything else?
No, I don't. Not at this time.
Okay, moving on to Councilman Ashley.
Speaking of drainage, over here on Commercial Street, right up north, north of where Wayne Cantrell lives, there's a tin horn, or it's concrete that goes under the road there, and cuts across some private property, and then goes down south, and then comes back out on Francis Street. And it's a mess, and people have been complaining to me about it, and that's all private property in there, is there anything we can do? There was a ditch, there's a ditch that's been dug across part of it, and you know where I'm talking about, don't you?
Behind Patsy's.
Comes out by, over there by Patsy Walker's house.
Yeah.
Across the street from us.
Ends up in the backyard of Patsy's and.
And Cantrell, Carolyn.
Carolyn Cantrell's. I don't know if there's anything to do, but if you, you know, somebody had a chance, they could go by and look at it.
It goes down by, it lands.
It goes down, goes down through there, and it, it just all floods in there.
Yeah.
We could maintain the ditch if we would get an easement from those people. Would you maintain the ditch?
Yeah, yeah.
Is that not right?
Yeah, there's a ditch that's been dug down through there, through part of it.
If it's not a part of the city easement now, it could be very easily made, it'd take a survey and a legal description, and then a move by the council to accept it as an easement, and then we could maintain it.
Anyway, if somebody can get over and look at it and see kind of where we're at or what we can do, if we can do anything with that. Okay.
Maybe that'd be a job for me.
There's all.
It is a utility easement in there?
Yeah, because that's where the poles are, isn't it? The electric poles?
We should be.
They bend down behind their house.
Yeah. Do whatever we need to do for the ditch.
Anyway, we've got, we've got a drainage problem over there, we've got drainage problems all over town, we're, we're gonna look at it, I appreciate it. One more thing, I've talked to a lot of people and had a really good response, people are really interested in the level pay utilities that we had talked about, and I may not be here after this meeting, I don't know, but I'd really like to get that started because it will really help a lot of people pay their bills.
I had Leslie, if you can address that, she can check it out for me.
I didn't, like, I didn't get addressed like I wanted to.
Okay.
But I did get some responses, a couple cities just have the customers average it themselves and pay, you know, do it on theirselves, or the city can do it, and what most cities do is they have to be a resident for a year, resident for a year, not delinquent, not been delinquent within that year, and then they'll add like 10% on, and then reevaluate the account and if it's running, that they owe us money, they have to make it up.
Can we go ahead, what, what we need to do, we may need to have an ordinance to do that, or is there any?
Need it with software company.
To get with the software company.
I'd have to deal with the software company first, get the logistics from doing.
See what they can do with.
Once you know how it's done.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah. Can we do that? What's the board say, is everybody in favor of that?
I think for the people, for the people who want it.
People who want it, and there's been, there's been several, I've had a real good response. Okay.
Then, then, am I understanding you, Mr. Ashley, you're putting forward a motion to?
If we need a motion, I'll make it. Yeah, let's, let's, let's get the ball rolling.
Just do the motion to ever look into the logistics with the software first, and then if it's, if it's doable by the city, then, then we'll do it.
Then we'll move on, on a, an ordinance. Yeah. Okay, we have a motion on the floor.
I have a second.
And we have a second. Any further discussion?
That's a good one.
Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign? Motion carries.
Some cities that do that.
Yeah, yeah, some cities do it.
Webster Electric does it, well, several of the propane companies around.
Utilities and.
Yeah, yeah.
But they have the stipulations, you know, they, you know, you get to average, they have to be here for a year, and then.
Well, it's kind of.
Well, people know what to budget. You know, you won't be paying 200 one month and 400 the next, it'd be 300 straight through, or whatever.
Whatever.
Whatever the amount might be.
Whatever it would be, but.
Very good.
Anyway.
Have we moved on then? Anything else, Jim?
Uh, no. I've enjoyed being Alderman here, I don't know if I'll be here next time, me and Larry may be sitting over on his back porch playing dominoes in a couple weeks, I don't know, but I've enjoyed being there, appreciate it.
Very well, good, Bill. Alright, so with that, I think we've broken a world record here, just an hour, and we're done with our first session. Chair would entertain a motion to move into executive session.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Could have roll call vote, please.
Jim Ashley?
Yes.
Mary Carpenter?
Yes.
Name is Chris? Dan Weimer.
Thank you all for coming, we'll move into executive session, of course, that's just the council and the mayor and the city administrator and the attorney. Of course, that's just the council and the mayor and the city administrator in the term.